It's going to introduce us to steep slopes. Does anybody have minutiae on the minutes?
Short and sweet.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to move minutes as written.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Okay, so David, why don't you?
Pass. Both directions. So, under section eight two four and four six two B, anytime somebody applies for a special exception that for an intrusion into the steep slopes, the planning board needs to provide a review and comment. You have no procedure for this intent. You should write one. And so in any event.
So what do you mean we have no procedure?
You have no written procedure on what you should be looking at, reviewing, commenting.
Well, we should be looking at the steep slopes, you know, what's written in the steep slopes.
You're right, but that's, it'd be nice to have a procedure for people to follow.
Okay.
But anyway. The great Hartman who lives down on Maple Lane is looking at putting in two solar trackers on a very steep slope. It's actually a little shelf that's on a steep slope. But the definition of steep slopes is anything that changes or has a 20% slope over 100 feet. And since this shelf is very narrow, when you look at it and whenever I measure a steep slope, I would start and go 50 feet in either direction from the center of where they want to do the development. And it comes out over the 20%. And so it is a steep slope.
And where the tracker's going literally in?
In the ground, there's a little shelf. I don't know the exact slope of the shelf, but it's a fairly flat area. It's not very big if you look at.
The last page.
Yeah, the very last page.
This is Rusty Estes.
Yes, this is Rusty Estes' old place.
I don't want to be cynical, but it looks like these people don't want to see their solar tracker.
I can guarantee you they don't.
Yeah, well.
That was one of the first conversations I had.
Is that bad?
Well, if you have other property, why don't you put it where you don't have to get to a conservation district?
There is a spot at the rear of the property. They went and did some checking for how, how much access. And the second to last sheet has the two alternate spots. And so those are, and they basically are looking at it and looking at how much trenching they're going to have to do and the additional cost of running the trenching back to the meter, which is at the bottom of the road, the bottom of the driveway.
Could you orient between the two pages?
This right here, this right here.
So it's turn this one?
Right. They're both landscape.
Yeah, just maybe get a little background, more background, which maybe is irrelevant, but I know Rusty sold off the top soil off of that steep slope and didn't do anything.
Right, it's a very narrow.
And I know they're trying, he's going through all the trouble to try to fix it, so to fix that steep slope.
I'm not sure putting something that's going to shed water is going to improve. But anyway, that's the board's decision. They'll think about it over the next two weeks.
So are, we're just giving input.
You're just giving input.
But the zoning board will?
The zoning board will make the final decision.
Can you give some clarification on the next to the last page? This one has the 65, 61%. So they don't want to put it on any of those sky one through four. They want to put it down lower where it says planned location with 150 foot.
Right, and it has better solar access.
Where they want to put it?
That's what they're saying.
And then, so their proposed location is where everybody else can see it, the rest of the road?
Fairly enough.
No.
No, it's way up above the road.
Yeah.
It's really steep coming to the road at that last, the last bit.
Are they doing a clearing up to the meter? Or up to the, I mean, to get to the meter or send their clearing?
They'll have the trench, yes, so.
So there's going to be a corridor right from the road looking at their.
If you look at, go back one more page to this picture. This is showing where the, the meter.
It's already been trenched and cut to put power up to the house.
I see.
That, that whole area is all torn up from 10 years ago.
So it could follow that corridor?
I, I think so. I think that that, I'm not quite sure. You'd have to go back down and look. I didn't know about this. I was a little dumb for research, but it is, I mean, that's, I'm up at the other end of the road. I walk down and then I walk back up.
Down drive.
Oh, God. Two school buses went down.
Yeah, that's.
From where?
From Shoestrap Inn.
No, 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 no.
They went through school buses. I didn't know they were little short ones with 12 students in each.
I think they were from out of town. They weren't mine. They were from mine.
If anyone does go down there, go to River Road and come up Maple Lane, don't go down Shoestrap.
Don't go through.
I, I, it's been closed for a while.
I mean, I was, I was weed whacking at the time and I screamed at them to stop.
So if we're on the third to last page of the big blow up, then that, the two parallel lines that you, that are shown in orange, and that's the road?
Yes.
And so those are going to, I mean, the thing will be in sight of, from the road.
You, you look, it's very, it's hard to see on this, but you can look from the contour lines here, and it really does climb quite steeply up from the road. So, I mean, you could see them, but you could look in like this.
What are the contour angles?
Two foot.
David, do you ask them whether they'll use the existing car or plan to use it?
Well, I don't know. David Lutz, who is the representative from Solar Flight, will be at your next meeting to answer your questions. Yeah. And probably Mr. Hartman.
So do we want to ask them to, have they put a stake in the ground and get people over there to?
I do not know. I can.
Of interest, anybody else?
Possibly.
I don't know if there's, I actually haven't been down to the site, so I don't know if it's even a stake in the ground, if it'll show up.
You certainly can't see the house from the road.
Right.
Yeah, I should probably recuse myself because I'm pretty in front of Craig's.
What is the, in the statute where we're supposed to review and give comment, does it say anything about what criteria we're supposed to use? Is it just, oh, I don't like this or this or that? Or is there something more tangible? There is a section in the zoning ordinance that talks about steep slopes and defines the districts. And it has the purposes of the district. So basically, you're looking at that. I didn't grab my book this, I'm going to go through, but section three, I want to say three twenty seven and something.
Do we know what, each of these four locations has a solar access number associated with it? Do we know what the planned location, the desired location?
The situation.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
On the, on that same page, on the picture itself, it says 90 to 93%.
I'm just going to grab my book right back.
Sorry.
No, no worries.
So the primary objective of the steep slopes conservation district, this is on page 16, if I might. Is to limit the nature and intensity and development of steep slopes to those uses which can be harmoniously, appropriately and safely located on steep slopes and thereby serve the following additional objectives. One, prevent soil erosion. Two, protect surface waters from sedimentation, turbidity, runoff of stormwater and effluent from sewage disposal systems. Three, preserve tree cover and other vegetative cover. Four, protect wildlife habitat. Five, preserve scenic views. Six, protect natural areas. And seven, maintain ecological balance. Yeah, that's the relevant part. So that's a, that's a bit of specificity.
Well, then page 29 starts the, we're talking about 4.62 steep slopes conservation district.
On page 16.
On page 29.
If you look at page 16.
Right, you were on page. Yeah, so what page do you want us to go to?
4.62.
What page 29?
And that tells us permitted and uses and special exceptions. So that would be what we're going to review.
Both. Maybe that would inform how we would judge the application of this, in my understanding. But this isn't, as things exist now, this is an accessory use or is it just a structure?
That would be an accessory use.
Yeah, so. It, you know, as an accessory use or even if you consider it a structure. It's a permitted use, I guess. How would you judge that?
It might be a special exception under four six two B four, which is, which is as permitted by, are provided in Article eight. And so there, if you go to Article eight, which is, we'd be looking at eight two four.
What page is that on?
Forty seven.
You mean the house? Here, you can look at mine.
I have next one now.
Is that in the other book?
This is subdivided.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you could subdivide it instead.
Right. I will say that that area, if you look at the aerial picture, you can see that the tree cover has been pretty, you can see it sort of ends right here. And this is all, it already been cleared.
Show me here.
This, see right here is the end of the tree. This is all open.
It's already open.
Yeah, and there's a trench that runs through the woods to the house.
So I guess, the question I would have based on the criteria would be about the exist, you know, would they be following or would they be cutting down trees together?
They wouldn't be cutting any more trees because there's no trees left to cut.
No, I mean, on the way in.
See, from the proposed location.
The corridor is, is open?
Yes.
Oh, I see, okay.
And I think too, John, I think as you read through all the justification for steep slopes, this is already the steep slopes. It's already been modified. By the clear and bigger the top slope. I don't know that this particular installation would make anything any worse.
Well, that might be, that might be a justification for the ZBA to make a special exception.
They're going to decide. We're just going to add our two cents.
It doesn't strike me to make this a great deal worse.
Yeah, yeah, and as I was saying, I know that he's going through a lot of hoops and whatever to try to fix that, you know, more risk to the top soil. He's trying to make it so warm.
Oh, that's okay, yeah. One of the things you also may want to look at is under section 1040 of the special exceptions, there's 1456. There are criteria that the zoning board have to look at for special exceptions. And so not only do they have to meet everything in eight twenty four, they also have to look at all these criteria. And so when you look at those, you know, that may be a guide to kind of the discussion. If those are the, that's the actual criteria that the zoning board is going to be, or part of the criteria.
Well, I mean, it's both.
Yeah, plus everything under eight twenty four plus.
But I mean, in the special exceptions section, I don't, I don't really know that there's much that would be.
Now, when you go down, back to the four six two, it's really not any criteria for the special, or it's not a criteria for granting.
What page?
Twenty nine thirty. It is the criteria that gets you to a special exception. You know, if you meet this criteria, then.
Right, I think the more relevant part is the objectives.
Right, the objectives is that. I think the objectives in conjunction with eight twenty four is how does the objectives in the requirements in eight twenty four, are they met or not?
So, yeah, I mean, everybody can have their two cents and we can send that, we're supposed to send that to the ZBA, but the ZBA is going to make the decision.
Right.
So David, a question about the slope. What is the length of slope that has to exist before it's considered a steep slope?
It has to be a 20-foot increase in elevation over 100 feet.
So that's defined somewhere in here?
Yes, if you look in the. Yep.
Not an extrapolated 100 feet. There has to be 100 feet of slope.
But.
Is that true in this?
Well, that's where this, you know, steep slopes are kind of tricky in that, that it's, I'd have to look at.
Because you could have a three-foot fall and call it a steep slope.
Right, but.
You know, I mean, that's.
And it is over 100 feet.
So, so the question is, it is over.
The 100 feet has to be there.
So is the 100 feet here in this, in this slope?
Yes. And what I do when I look at, or trying to determine if something is in a steep slope or not, I have in the GIS system areas that meet that criteria. And then I actually look at where the development's going to be. And I say the midpoint of 100 feet is in the middle of the development and then you go 50 feet either direction. And there is nothing else in the zoning that tells me how to do that. So I felt that was the fairest way of doing it.
So if it's not 50 feet in either direction, then it doesn't count as a steep slope?
Right, if the change in elevation is not 20 feet.
Within that 100.
Within that 100. So, you know, if you have, let's say, this little shelf, if that shelf extended for 50 feet and then we went up the hill, it very well could be that it was, it's not steep slopes. But when you have.
Would it depend on where on the slope you put it? You put it towards the top, therefore it was not 50 feet from the top. Would that alter the, our call? Or was the higher slope?
Yeah, because there'd be, yeah, there'd be flat area at like along here. It'd be just flat. You put it at the edge. And then there'd only be 50 feet of slope.
So at his current site, he doesn't make it, but he might if he moved it up 20 feet.
But he'd have to do a lot more than.
In this particular site.
Yeah, in this particular site.
Okay, any more questions?
What's the process? We just think about this and?
And so in two weeks, we'll come back with our notes about whatever. And then we'll put our notes together and send it on. And we'll have the opportunity to ask questions.
Right, I think David Lutz, at minimum would be here. And I think Craig would also.
And you're, you're not allowed to clear a steep slope. Is that correct?
You shouldn't, but again.
So that's what we're saying about.
Well, you shouldn't, I'm sorry. I, I, the zoning does not prevent you from doing that. You are, the zoning doesn't, only restricts building structures. So you can clear the steep slope under design.
I saw several years ago on River Road, there was a huge clear cut, clearly on steep slopes. Not something that we can regulate.
So no line ordinances or rules restricted and probably no state rules restricted?
State rules just give you best management practices. So if you violate best standard practices, wherever you are, you're, you know, in trouble with them. But towns can't regulate cuts with the state.
And when David said you shouldn't, that's, truance says, don't clear cuts to your slopes because it'll all wind up in. I think that's what you meant, yes, right.
But there is no ordinance against, because the state regulates forestry and has not given the towns the authority to do so. The towns can't.
If we require landscaping, you know, for something, then we, you know, in a site plan, then we can say, oh, you can't cut those trees because they're part of the required landscaping, but we can't prevent, you know, anybody from cutting down the trees.
Okay, so you won't, you won't contribute comments because of?
You can contribute comments, it's just not.
Well, can he?
As a member of the public.
Well, I don't, you know, it's, it's a board decision to, as far as what goes into the comments. And so if the board decides.
Well, I mean, the only person who can recuse themselves is you. So if you.
But you're not, this is not a board decision. There's no, this is just comments. And so you can make comments.
So he doesn't have to recuse himself?
Right, because we're not really voting.
Right, so there's no, but, you know. If you feel that you're, you know, it's good friend, that just stepping back just to be, is a good practice.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
What would be the purpose of him asking us to comment?
The zoning requires it.
It's required.
It's required?
Yes.
In any steep slope?
When you're getting a special exception if you're working in a steep slope, the planning board is required to view, review it and provide comment if you're working in wetlands or shoreland. The Conservation Commission is required to review and comment.
Okay, people ready to move on? All right, welcome back to a familiar topic. So before we start, I just wanted to ask a question about when, when we want to send this out? Because I'm very optimistic. We're going to finish it tonight. In fact, the doors are locked. So, but people come back from summer stuff and, I mean, like school is open in September and things like that. Do we want to send this, wait until September to send it out?
Yes.
That's a yes.
Do you send this to the Energy?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go through. First of all, thank you, BP, for putting it together. So what, what is this thing? Was, is that an AI thing or something?
When it's, I mean, it's, it's a well-understood measure of grade level comprehension. And it's implemented through Word. Essentially, you can go and highlight something and you ask Word to analyze it and it tells you what grade level it is and what the score is.
And it'll do it to different grade levels?
It, it tells you what you've done. And so I just did that because I thought it might influence the wording of some things if we decide that we don't want. So I also, I went through the, just, you know, for sure, the questionnaire all together is grade level 9.7.
Perfect.
So the questionnaire is five.
Okay, and what was?
And then paragraph by paragraph, I went through, trying to figure out what, what the culprits were for making us be horrible to understand for people. The second paragraph is grade 17.
Grade 17, I didn't get to that.
The reference data, is that what you're?
No, at the 2020 town meeting, line voters, blah, blah, blah. That's, that paragraph is grade level 17.
Wow.
What's that, I mean, like college?
Yes, yes.
Well, actually, that's postgraduate.
Twelve and five.
That's postgraduate.
When you read it, it's not.
Yeah.
No, I'm just, it's information.
I'm not criticizing you by criticizing the software.
Yeah.
The reference data, the reference data doesn't really read as anything except data. So the next paragraph would start right now. That's grade level eight. The beyond stole small-scale solar panel arrays, that's grade 15.
15?
Yep, and then after that, the rest of it is grade 11.
Well, I'm not worried about that. I think it's understandable.
No, I'm just, you know, it's, it's more data for you to consider when you think about how to modify things. I think part of it, I took out enhanced as one of the words was in this, I changed it to.
And presently.
I changed enhanced to something else and it dropped it a half a grade level. So I think it's sensitive to certain words, but I think it's also sensitive to sentence structure that compound sentences.
Too many prepositional phrases.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Or how about just the percent symbol?
No, that's.
That might throw people off.
No, that's.
It's an higher math.
Grade level eight.
So I noticed in the reference data, we had somebody from the Energy Committee had recommended, and I thought it was a good idea to, one acre was a football field without end zones. And that got changed to about half the line common. Why is that?
Not everybody plays football.
Well, not everybody goes to the line common, you know, I mean. The thing that I liked about the football is if you have two acres on the line common, you know that half of it is one acre, but it's a different way of visualizing. I just thought that the variety was useful.
Well, football field, I, I think I just perhaps missed that by cutting and pasting from something else. But I, football field doesn't appeal to me.
What if we just put the football field in parentheses after the line common?
That's fine with me.
I mean, that would cover both.
That probably jacks it up to all as well.
But, I mean, that's.
That holds.
It's nowhere.
Right, no, I mean, it's certainly true that, you know, more parenthetical comments does, it's like, oh, wait, I have to remember more stuff is up here.
Well, this is not a big deal. So what do, what do people?
So the football field's still 1,500 feet bigger than an acre.
All right, so you want to just keep about half the line common?
I don't care.
I, I like the two.
Okay.
You like which number?
Well, I like thinking about the line common two times instead of having something different to think about. You know, because it allows me to put my brain on hold a little bit.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we have many voices. So on, on the current maximum, I'm sorry, to cite a one megawatt solar energy system typically requires five to seven acres which generates. And again, I don't feel strongly about it, but which generates about 1,200 megawatt hours? Or do we want to just commit to the 1,200 watt hours?
I like about more, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Instead of which, we say, and that generates and it generates, instead of, because the which, I'm having a hard time because it's.
Oh, that?
Yeah, because it's, well, it's, it's right near to the five to seven acres. And so.
Period, capital T, that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that makes me feel better, thank you.
All right, Tim.
On the one about the current maximum coverage. I, I was just thinking that was a little awkward and I was wondering whether we should say underlying zoning, the maximum coverage of a lot is 2,600 square feet, about a half acre. Either a percent, I mean, it just seems like.
It needs context?
Yeah, I mean.
I don't like that.
Yeah.
So you could say current zoning limits maximum lot coverage area on a lot to about half an acre.
All right, so current zoning limits.
Restricts maximum or limits whatever.
Limits maximum coverage area on a lot to about? Is that what you're saying? Limits maximum coverage area on a lot to about, is that what you're saying?
Do we need the twenty-six thousand, because that's actually what the zoning says, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't, we can do whatever we want, but are we saying on a lot, taking out the equal and saying two? Or are we leaving the equals in?
I think we could take out the...
Yeah, make it full.
I kind of question what we're trying to get at here, because the current maximum coverage on a lot, we can already build between three-quarters and one-megawatt of power if we're measuring it by the drip edge of the panels, as if we were building. So what, what are we trying to convey?
Well, I think there's two things, it's telling you what you can do now, because this is suggesting the possibility of changes. This is what, this is the current maximum. When, when we're discussing one, two, three, four, whatever numbers that people are considering, I think it's important that they know that in relation to what the, what is currently allowed.
I think it might be, to me, it feels confusing, because we're talking about, we're comparing half an acre of coverage to a one-megawatt system that requires five to seven acres, and so it, to me, it feels like we're comparing apples and oranges.
Well, where's the comparison, it's just, this is reference, but it's not comparing.
So, well, it's saying you can develop half an acre.
Yeah.
But these are just bullet points.
These are, this is reference data, it's not an argument.
Yeah, it's just...
No, it's not, I, I think it's confusing though, I mean, I think...
So what, what if we moved it away from there?
John, let me take a stab at it.
Please.
I think it's confusing because we're mixing facts and laws of physics. An acre is an acre, it's, you know, line common is what it is. A one-megawatt solar array is five to seven acres, that's a fact, and that, you know, current state of technology, twenty-three, blah, blah, blah. Twelve line use, it generates this many megawatt hours, those are facts. They're laws of physics kind of facts. It is also a fact that the maximum lot coverage in line is twenty-six thousand square feet, but that's just a policy.
That's a rule.
That's a rule, yeah, thank you, that's a rule, and so I, I wouldn't put that in at all, I don't think it...
Well, I'll tell you...
Can I just jump in on that also, and I agree with Rich for another reason. To me, that's just very misleading, that is absolute maximum, you're going to get on a lot that can support that, it's not every lot.
That's true.
And so, this to me is, you know, when somebody reads this, they're going to think, oh, great, anyone can do twenty-six thousand square feet, so...
Yeah, that's a good point, David, I think...
I'll, I'll be happy to roll over on this one too, but I'd like to explain why I think it's a good idea. We originally had in the language, major zoning changes, and there was a negative reaction to that. I think the reason that major was in there is because it is major. What we're changing in terms of, of lot coverage is major. And if we don't say anything, people have no context when they're answering questions about preference for a limit on the size for a solar array. It's, they don't, they don't know what the present moment is. And then while the half an acre is maximum, you know, if you have a hundred acres, you could, you could get to twenty-six thousand, and so if you, I don't know how that would work out.
What's the smallest amount of land you could put a twenty-six thousand square foot stroke coverage on?
Twenty-six thousand square feet divided by two percent.
Well, you could, you could address David's concern though, by just changing it to say, current maximum coverage area on a lot is up to half an acre, twenty-six thousand feet and then...
And then on lots.
That covers exactly what I, that's a great way of dealing with that.
Yeah, so up to...
Yeah.
Current zoning limits maximum coverage area on a lot.
To about half an acre, up to about half an acre, twenty-six thousand feet.
So what does somebody do with that fact, and how do they put that into context with a one-megawatt system?
It has no...
Well, I think it does, that it, there's, we're saying, right now, under the current zoning, you can do, you could build up to twenty-six thousand square feet of...
Which is how many mega, how many kilowatts or megawatts?
Because my calculation says three-quarters of a megawatt.
Yes, so, if a megawatt is, I mean, quick numbers, if a megawatt is five acres, call it, just for easy numbers.
Five acres of total involvement.
Total involvement. At that drip edge, don't we?
Yeah, we were using drip edge because we were preparing to build it.
I don't think it matters.
Yeah.
I think that you guys know too much, and that we're really just trying to inform the public about broad stroke thoughts about how lot coverage is allowed in town at the moment.
Right.
And if people want to get into the weeds, they can ask questions, or they can do their own research. I think that, you know, being so specific is going to be just tedious and people are going to zone out.
So are, are people willing to keep this in there or, or take it out?
I think it's a thing, I mean, because I think, Richard, I think it is important for people to know what, what zoning might change to.
Right.
You know, in other words, if they know what it is now, then they have a reference as to what it might change to.
Could we perhaps...
But if they don't know what zoning is at all, then they don't have any reference.
I mean, I guess when I look at this, I'm thinking that people are going to be saying, well, you can do half an acre now, and if we want a one-megawatt, we're going to have to multiply that by ten or more to get to five acres, and that's not what we're asking.
But it's giving them a scale of what's allowed now to what you're... We're changing, what we're, we're offering them is to change the zoning. This gives them the context of how the zoning would change. There's not, you know, if, if I didn't know anything and I read this, and that wasn't in there, I would go, what is your preference for a limit on the size of a solar array? You know, so, so I go, well, five or seven acres, I would probably assume that's already allowed.
So I'm going to argue the other side, that we are, we are very explicitly asking the people in town, what they would like to see for solar energy generation, and to say, well, if you've got a ten-acre lot, you would only be allowed two percent of that. And to get in all those details, I think, I think it gets confusing. And to say, well, you could have twenty-six thousand square feet of coverage, that sugars up to about thirty acres, but that's only twenty, the twenty-six thousand square feet, you don't have the thirty-acre parcel, but we have to have way more than thirty acres because of steep slopes.
Right.
So, I don't even think, I mean, that, that hardly applies to any parcels.
So, I mean, I guess that, that would kind of strengthen my wanting to have it in there, because what's allowed now is even, as you're saying, in most cases, far less than twenty-six thousand acres on a practical level. I mean, twenty-six thousand feet.
No, I, I hear your point, I'm, I, I'm going to argue, last time I'll say it, but I'm going to argue...
Go ahead and argue.
No, this is last time, that, we really want to find out what the residents want. If the residents don't like heat tones, residents don't like this, and are saying, I want to change the zoning in line to allow megawatt arrays, that's important feedback for us.
But what's the contradiction? I don't understand the contradiction, this is just a function.
What relevance, what relevance does twenty-six thousand square feet have?
Because that's, that's what is allowed now.
But, but no one, hardly any parcels in line qualify.
Exactly, so that it's actually even less than twenty-six thousand, that's the most generous possible interpretation. So what would be changing would be in that context. Anyway, you know, what, you and I have presented, yeah, no, we presented the situation, let's just, who wants this in there, or, I'll ask for, okay, I want it in there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I want it in there in some form, yeah.
Okay, so...
Would it make Rich happier if, say, we listed that first or last, so it's like, kind of by itself, not a physical rule, but, you know, a zoning rule?
Where could it, where could it go?
Well, it could go in front of the one acre equals about half the line common, so you, you're getting a sense of about half an acre. Current zoning allows half an acre, then one acre is about half the line common, so, oh, okay, so current zoning allows about half, you know, a quarter of a line common, you know, so it would go kind of stepwise, you know, with half acre, one acre, two acres, and then you go to five to seven, you know, that kind of thing. So would that feel better?
Or you could just put it after twenty-five years of now, so...
Yeah, either, either way, just to separate it from the facts.
You could add something to it back there, which requires more than thirty acres.
Uh, that's good, that gets...
It gets, but it gets longer and longer.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm looking at the final paragraph there, to say, in considering the zoning changes necessary, I wonder if that...
Oh, that's, that's going to take you back up to twelfth grade.
Okay, neither is a much simpler term. Can we capitalize planning board in that last sentence, since we capitalized in the first, first paragraph?
You, you guys go back and forth, sometimes you say make up all lowercase, and sometimes you say...
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Well, I just think it should be consistent, whatever it is.
Be consistent, but which one do you want, all, all?
Yeah, we like, we like to think we're important.
All right. Capitals it is.
And can we get rid of feedback and say opinions, because people might not know what feedback is?
Okay, well, maybe, anybody cares. I think feedback is fine, but opinions is fine too.
I thought that last sentence was sort of awkward, it needs a little bit more of a transition. I, I wanted to say something like, in considering, in considering these issues, the planning board would appreciate any feedback you might offer.
Well, I think it's important to include zoning changes because...
No, I like the paragraph, I just thought the last sentence, where we go, where we say, we're balancing all this stuff, and then we just say, please share your feedback, that just seemed abrupt.
Oh, I see, I see.
It was more abrupt before, because that please share your feedback wasn't there. It was in worse.
Yeah, it just said, it says it...
My little chatter trying to flow out.
I don't really care, but I just...
Yeah, no, I, I, it says it, and the reason there was nothing there is because it says at the top, please read the information below, reply to the questions, and add any comments, but I think it's good to remind people.
Well, any presentation, you tell them what you're going to tell them.
Tell them at the top.
Then you tell them, and then you tell them again what you're...
So, so what would you like, David?
I would say something like, in considering these issues, the planning board would appreciate any feedback you're willing to share or something.
You can't use inconsiderate, that's the beginning of the first sentence.
Yeah, but I like, I like your suggestion, and I figured out what, what would make me happy, I'm starting that paragraph to say, line's current ordinance permits no more than a half acre of solar...
Maximum.
Maximum, something like that.
That's a good idea.
Half acre, and then, as you consider the zoning change...
I think that's a really good idea.
Okay, and that, that makes me totally happy, thank you.
So, how, what did I think, what did I think, was it a good idea?
What's current zoning?
Right.
Allows, limits?
No, wait, under current zoning, a maximum...
Limits maximum what, what coverage?
A maximum of...
Should we use another word other than coverage?
Well, let's just get the, let's just get the sentence, and then we can...
So just...
Under current zoning, a maximum of a half an acre, of a half, a half acre of...
Development or solar panels or...
Well, it's actually...
It is coverage, well, it is coverage, but I mean, coverage is sort of this weird abstract word that, holy, we understand.
Don't cop me in.
And, and so...
Do you have to include building, so they know that it's building and all that?
Of developments, including solar arrays?
David, what do you think would be the right way to say, under current zoning, a maximum of a half acre of...
Includes driveways to...
Yeah, I think development is a really good...
Of development.
Including, perhaps even include solar arrays, and, and as you consider what changes could be made to the ordinance.
All right, so, under current zoning, a maximum of a half acre of development is allowed, as you consider...
Changes to the ordinance.
Okay, is...
Development's even fuzzy.
Yeah, I would just stay...
Development's intentionally fuzzy.
But it is, it's coverage, we're, we're really talking about the same thing, but everywhere else, we're talking about coverage, why would we change it?
Well, I don't know, when, when the ordinance was written, as coverage was referring to developments, or, or some type of structure that was actually meant to protect what was inside of the web.
No, no, coverage is the, is the coverage on the ground.
Tennis courts and driveways and dark ends and decks and arms.
Any type of, I, I like the word development, because it's really any type of development you're...
Anything that a human has done.
Yeah, if you have, you know, putting driveways, you put in the patios, decks...
Chicken coops.
So shouldn't we, all right, so if that's it, then why not say it's something like surface coverage?
I, I think what happens is we're, we're starting to think in ways that people who are reading this aren't going to think, and we're getting too, too specific, or too into, into details. So, I mean, keep it, keep it simple, keep it trite, then it's bound to turn out right.
I like that question, too, I think most people know what development is.
Okay, under current zoning, a maximum of a half acre of development is allowed, and then you were going, you had...
As, as you consider what changes...
Since we've already used, using consider, what are we saying, thinking about?
We took out, we took out a consider, oh...
No, I was going to make that paragraph start with...
Under, under cor, current.
Under current, and then, second sentence, as you consider the zoning changes necessary, that, to consider what changes you might approve.
What if you say possible, throwing two...
Possible.
Do you consider possible zoning changes?
But we're not asking them actually to weigh in on zoning changes, we're just, we have certain questions we're asking, specific questions, and they're not easily translatable to zoning changes, so I don't think we should say that they are considering some changes.
Right, because they may not like it at all, so as you consider allowing multi-acre solar arrays...
There you go, as you consider allowing... Multi-acre solar arrays in line. So, all right, so before the please, I don't really get this, the, the line planning board must consider multiple factor, factors, such as local energy use and aesthetics, it's like, that says nothing, local ener, I don't even know what that means in this context, local energy use, why, why are we, because, what is, they're considering the local.
I think it refers to the first sentence, the, the aspirational hundred percent renewable...
But that's already in there, we're not, I mean, we've already essentially considered that, why is that in this part?
What, I wrote the original sentence, and what I was saying is that there was basically a balance between considering the aspirations of the town and the aesthetics of the sites. And that was, and that was something that zoning and or planning had to, had to really come to that edge.
Is that, is that clear to everybody?
It's less clear the way it's written now, but it still has the idea.
As we consider allowing multi-acre solar arrays in line, we value, we value your opinion.
Right, and, and...
It's just one...
Leave it at that.
Just leave it like that.
Yeah.
And leave them into the...
So as we, because it's not just the planning board, it's them, as we consider allowing multi-acre solar arrays in line, we value your opinion.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, that's good, because they don't care what we think.
All right, as, as, as we.
Consider.
Consider.
Amending the zoning rules to allow multi-acre solar.
How, how did you put it?
I would just say, as we consider allowing multi-acre zoning of, of arrays in line, we value your opinion.
You're gonna take us up to law school with that, you know, that's grade twenty or something.
We value your opinion.
As we consider.
And then, and then maybe say, please, um, fill out the questionnaire.
And return it to wherever it's gonna go.
It might be important for people to know that this, they are, would have to change the zoning, because they might not realize.
Well, we're gonna, I thought we were gonna have the, under current zoning, a maximum half acre development is allowed, as we consider allowing multi-acre.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's great, I think that's really good.
We value your.
How many of these did we get back last time?
Not a lot.
Could you give me that first sentence again?
Uh, under current zoning, a maximum of a half acre of development is allowed. And then, what I got so far is, as we consider allowing multi-acre.
Solar arrays in line, we value your.
Arrays in line. We value, we value what?
Your opinions.
Value your opinions.
So please fill out the attached, or is this questionnaire gonna be separate, or is it, please?
I think it's gonna be on one sheet.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to get double sided.
So, please fill out the questionnaire on the other side, on the backside, and return it to Amy.
You know that gives me too much power.
Okay, so, so please what?
Please fill out the questionnaire on the back of this page.
Return it to the box in the.
Well, don't say on the back of this page, because we might want to do on the line as well.
Yes, right.
Well, we will.
Fill out the attached questionnaire. Yes, right.
Okay. The attached questionnaire. And what about, no, we need to provide instructions for those who are having a paper copy, what to do with it. Is that gonna be on the questionnaire?
It should be.
Yeah, it should, it should.
On the questionnaire.
And send this to.
John's that one.
Mail, mail, send or mail?
I just gotta change me to the tax stuff, because it always bugged me that we get tax bills, and then you have to pull out an envelope, figure out what the address is, and fill it in yourself in order to pay the bill. I always felt like, uh, when you're sending something in, when someone's asking you for something, they should send you an envelope. Easy to send it back to them. And so, I, we did research on the select board, and the cost of including self-addressed envelopes for the entire town for the tax bill was forty-five dollars.
Really?
That's what I was gonna say.
So, we should do that with this, too.
But, did you know anybody on the select board will give us that money?
All right.
Okay, okay, ooh.
Sorry, my budget's too tight for forty-five dollars.
All right, so, so you're guaranteeing the forty-five dollars sold.
Under Lime's current zoning, a maximum of a half acre of development is allowed.
Up to, maximum of up to?
Yeah, a maximum of up to.
Otherwise, we're gonna set expectations that he's gonna have to.
Yeah, that is ridiculous.
The only, my intent is to send this all to Staples and have them return, um, everything printed, stuffed, and ready to go. I don't know if they can add envelopes, so that, we'll have to see. For the tax, yes, because the company that does the tax.
Yeah, it might be different, but I bet.
I, I'm not sure, I just, I, I'm not gonna make any guarantees until I.
Also, you're asking for money, we're not asking for money here.
True, but we still do wanna get.
We do want, yeah, we do want input.
Well, you could want for some money.
Yeah, the simpler you make it, better, certainly. If it doesn't cost much, it would be worth it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe you should take these and put them in with the tax bills.
I don't wanna wait that long, thank you.
That, everybody tears up the tax bills, so we won't get any response. But, I, I'm really, in terms of getting a response, I think, you know, one thing we can all do is tell the people we know, you know, urge them to actually respond to this, because we didn't get a good return last time.
Or should we turn it to, return it to?
Well, it depends, if, if we put it in an envelope, we'll just have it returned to the P O Box one twenty-six.
Oh, great.
What if people don't wanna put the stamp on, and then drop it off at the town offices?
They may put a box.
Yeah, we had a box out there during the town questionnaire. Um, so, let, let me go over this last paragraph, nail that down, so we can get to the questionnaire. Under current zoning, do we wanna?
In the line, in the line's current zoning?
Well, I mean, I think we've established that we're in line at this point.
Okay.
Under current zoning, a maximum of, do we wanna say a maximum of up to, we already said maximum.
Just take out the up to, maximum.
Okay, under current zoning, a maximum of a half acre of development is allowed. As we consider allowing multi-solar arrays in line, there we go, we value your opinion. Please fill out the attached questionnaire.
Um, did you mean to say multi-acre solar arrays?
Yes.
Okay, because he just said multi-solar arrays.
Oh, yeah, and I, I skipped the word here.
Okay, good, I want to have it.
Thank you.
So, we jumped, we, we decided to take out the twenty-six thousand square feet.
Right.
From the list above.
Right.
We didn't talk, and, and I'm sorry to go backwards, but, uh, we didn't talk about the three paragraphs.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
So we're taking out the, um, we take twenty-six thousand, we're flipping out of the.
Out of the data.
Referenced it.
Because the, the, the only thing I have in the body is incredibly minor, um, and I don't even know if it's true, but in the third paragraph, starting at the end of the second line, in the state of New Hampshire, comma.
What does the first, what do you count the third paragraph?
Third, oh, I'm sorry, third underneath the data.
Underneath, so that's the third paragraph.
In the, in the state of New Hampshire, uh. Comma, is that?
Yep, yep, sure.
And, and should state, what were you saying, state should be?
State should be kept, yeah.
Okay, I don't know. Oh, sure, we'll give a promotion.
Sure, okay.
In the penultimate paragraph, uh, the last sentence, I would change will to will.
Okay, penultimate, the one before the.
You're typing solar array.
Point to where?
Either type of solar array may contribute to a revolting possible use of our organization.
And I, I just have a comment, I don't have any solution to this, and it probably doesn't matter, but, um, when we say multi-acre solar arrays can be either group net metered or commercial, I suspect that the majority of people aren't gonna have a clue what that is, because I had lived, and I read it, and she said, what's that mean? But maybe it doesn't matter, I mean, to try to define that is gonna be way too difficult.
We can look it up.
I mean, that, that's important just to say, because there's no state mandated limits to the size of a commercial array.
Right.
That's why that's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we basically came around to wanting to make this as streamlined as possible.
Right, exactly.
It was a lot longer.
But, I mean, I'm just sort of saying.
Yeah, you're right.
Know what that is.
You're right. But tell one to call me off later.
Yeah.
Tell them to the R S A, they're perfectly clear.
Yeah.
Right, that's.
I just wanted to add a couple little, um, okay, the planning board wants your input on allowing multi-acre ground mounted solar energy systems.
Okay.
And then, um, and then a couple of words in the next, next sentence. Please read the information below, reply to the questions, and add any comments you may have.
Okay, very good.
Probably not graduate school.
No, no.
These word allowing, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so can we go on to the questionnaire?
Yep.
Well done. So, oh, and, and, and question number one, or whatever you wanna call it. And I realize I, I was in a, a brain meltdown, buddy, at the last meeting. But I don't think, I don't want any solar arrays is the best thing, way to put it. How about small-scale solar roof and ground-mounted panels are enough? Because we do say, right now, over twelve percent of Lime properties produce them through small-scale solar roof and ground-mounted panels. So this would refer back to that instead of that, sorry.
I think that's good, that's very nice.
Say that again, please.
Yeah, small-scale solar roof and ground-mounted panels are enough.
Yeah, also that first, then so does he kind of agree about this?
Yeah, it's, exactly.
Is it are enough or is enough?
Are is a present, multiple.
But it's, but it's, but it's a condition, it's up to.
Small-scale and they are, it is.
But you see, allowing is the implied verb here, and that allowing is enough.
But it's not in there.
But that's.
And I, I would say.
English works. Enough, are enough is okay, I'm just saying, okay.
Well, it's small-scale, solar roof.
We have to make that one error.
And ground-mounted panels is enough? That doesn't sound, it should be.
Oh, also the heading should take out draft questions, because we are gonna get to, like, where we don't need to say draft.
Well.
Today.
Okay, okay, well, sometimes those things get on there, it's like.
It's not going to, it's not going to the printer for a whole while.
Okay, okay.
But if you don't put draft questions on the date, you write up inversion hell.
That's right, that's right, but you'll, you'll remember to take those out. Well, anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll review it before it goes out.
Should we say circle one instead of two four?
Well, it's, you're not circling it, there's check, you can say check.
Okay, because I would circle it.
Yours didn't print it out a little bit long.
Yeah, you don't have line.
There's a, on the, on the version I printed out.
Oh, okay, I, yeah, you don't.
Except for Tim, we should circle it.
We should circle it, yeah.
And Rich. Well, you didn't know, I didn't.
Mine, for some reason, didn't also, so.
Mine has lines.
But I think it's how you, if you print it while it's, if you're using like Gmail, and you print it out of Gmail, it tries to interpret things a little differently than if you save it and then print it.
It's, it's tab leaders in Word, it's the way you're supposed to.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, I just, I think the, the way Chrome.
We can say check one.
Or Google.
Well, we have to check all that apply down below, so maybe.
We're looking for checks.
Check one.
Check one.
Check one.
Very good, okay, uh, anything else in one? Anything in two? Anything in three?
By two, it should be, I was wanting to use a subjective, or at least say, would it bother you if a multi-solar array was located here in your property? It's a condition, right? It is.
Was or were.
May, may be the right way to say it, but.
Graduate school.
Was.
It should be was or were, but.
Uh, actually, what about, what, would it bother you if a multi-acre solar array M located near your property?
B?
Yeah, M, M loca- A M. Okay, was, all right, how about?
Was or were.
Were.
Yeah, were, uh, were, I prefer, but, so are we doing were?
Were.
Were works. Okay, uh, number three.
I still.
Go ahead.
Think that, uh, it just, from somebody who is no, who's not been part of any of this conversation, that those are just random areas.
Yeah, that's fine.
They are?
Okay, that's, you know, it just.
It doesn't matter if they have, there's.
We would have to have another page explain.
Well, no, I understand that, but it's just, you know, I don't, uh, I know that you'll get comment back on it, that why you, these areas.
Well, you'd have to list every damn road in town, which would be impossible, so.
Well, a lot is chosen because of free base power.
So we could say, um.
I think it's fine.
Okay, that's, I can.
They can always add their own if they want.
If people object, we're gonna get feedback, and then we can have a conversation.
Yeah, like, any, any interaction is good at this point.
Yes.
So, can we find a different word for where it is visually unobtrusive?
I want you to see, I, I didn't want to see anything, but, but the blue line underneath. Well, I was, I, I, I could live with unobtrusive, it's just a little unobtrusive.
Objection.
No.
Isn't it where I can't, well.
Where I can't see it's already there.
Yeah, I know, but, but visually unobtrusive is less, you can see it a little bit.
What if we say where it is visually, what if we say where it is visually screened?
Because screening could be a hundred percent.
Where it is, where.
But then it becomes the same thing as the next one.
Yeah, where I can't see it.
So why do we have to?
So we need to.
Because there's a difference, I think.
It's either, yeah.
You can sort of see it, or you can't see it at all.
Right, right, so it's not in my face, is, is like, kinda how I see.
In your face, but you.
Yeah, well, that's what where it is visually unobtrusive means to me, where it's not in my face.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So, uh, okay.
Well, we'll keep it that.
Okay. Number four. The only thing I have with number four is whether we should, should we allow multi-acre solar arrays in line where, it's not where land was clear, it's where woodland was, was clear cut.
Yes, yes, the woodland was clear cut for the primary purpose of multi-acre solar array installation, I mean.
Yeah, of, of installing the array.
Oh, yes, yeah, because otherwise it could be for your driveway, or your house, or.
So what, what's the wording?
Whatever it's.
What did, what did Rich say?
The land was clear cut for the primary purpose of installing solar arrays.
Yeah, that's good.
Of installing the array.
Oh, installing the array.
You don't have to install the array, of installing the array, yes, yep.
Very good. Okay, number five. Should it say, should we limit, or maybe this is redundant, should we limit construction of multi-acre solar arrays to those projects directly serving primarily? It's too many L Ys. It's fine, okay.
Or is it primarily serving, which, what's the right order?
To those projects primarily serving, isn't that right? Do people have any comments on that?
Well, they're mixing each other way.
Primarily serving.
There's an order to these things, and I, I don't have.
Well, it's what we, yeah, no, I mean, there's a difference in meaning, depending on where it is, so.
Oh, good point.
Yeah, so, it's like, what is your meaning, I guess?
So, should we limit construction of multi-acre solar arrays to those projects? Yeah, where, if you say serving primarily, that emphasizes primarily relating to. Okay.
I mean, it's a good way to do it.
Okay.
The way it is.
Yeah, thank.
I'd like this, then try striking the word, uh, construction of, should we limit multi-acre solar arrays to those projects?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Where was it?
Oh, that's, in that same sentence, just strike the word construct of.
Limit, yeah, so take a construction of. Yep, that's right.
Yes, sir.
To those projects serving primarily line.
Yep.
Residents. Or whatever, so number six, any, anything in number six?
I think the last part, I would be interested in purchasing solar energy from a neighbor, because, I mean, to me, I think a lot of people say, well, yeah, I run an extension cord in my neighbor's basement, and that would be great, I mean, they're not gonna know.
But just don't tell them about.
You're so ghetto, Tim.
They have no clue about what, but maybe it doesn't matter, I don't know, but they're certainly not gonna know what that means, I don't think. From a neighbor.
From a neighborhood project.
From a neighborhood, that might be.
From a neighborhood project?
From a neighborhood array?
Neighborhood.
Well, I mean, I, what does that mean? I mean, it, it, it sort of conveys the notion that, oh, wait, we use a neighborhood to get together and like, do something? And then, is that something that you would be positive when it comes toward, or?
No, no, thank you very much. Okay, so, so from a neighborhood.
Solar array.
Or, from a neighborhood solar array.
I mean, and I think neighbor is, or neighborhood is, I mean, I consider Rich Brown my neighbor, even though he's four miles away.
Yeah.
Well, that's okay, he can have the array, and.
I mean, but if we were doing a new group net metering system, I mean, your property, Rich could.
It, it could actually.
Look into it, well, then why, then why, why don't we just say, I would be interested purchasing solar energy from a. A group net meter, I guess.
Because I think neighborhood solar, um, is a non-technical.
Right, okay, you answered the question.
But I think you need to take out the do not do so now, because there's nobody doing it.
Right, or even if they were, it wouldn't be relevant to them.
Right.
Uh, so I would, I would. So I would, I would be interested in purchasing solar energy from a neighborhood's solar array.
Yep.
If it were.
Cost competitive.
Cost competitive.
Yep.
And then what other thoughts, limits or concerns you have regarding multi-acre solar arrays? Are, are we done?
I want to go back to the previous point.
Oh.
You're right.
Where?
But the do not do so now and the previous, I'd be interested in purchasing some renewable energy if it were cost competitive with what I currently pay, full, full stop.
With what I currently pay?
Right. Oh, no, just take that out, but I don't do it now.
Yeah, that's out.
No.
The one, the one right before that.
Show me what we're doing.
Oh, this one right here, cross, take cross out.
Oh, that I currently pay, cross it up, but do not do this. Oh, that's all, just take that out?
Just take that out, I think.
Okay, but the other one we, we nailed down, I would be interested in purchasing solar energy from a neighborhood solar array for the cost competitive, that's.
Yeah.
That's, that's just so.
Are there any other? I would like to congratulate.
I don't know, I think we really need to repaint this.
They just, they said.
Hey, let's just tear it up.
On this page.
David wants to relive some of the meetings we didn't come to.
Yeah, yeah, that is true. You missed, you missed so much.
Yeah, I will, I will, yeah, yeah.
All right, well, this is truly remarkable. And so we're, we're shooting for September. Vicky, you, you always seem to.
Yeah, I don't think you should do it.
Seem to be a, a good go-to person about, when, when's the, should we send it early September, mid, early September is okay?
The school starts.
Early today.
Right around.
Okay.
Could, could we have just a moment's consideration for a good title?
Warren Peace.
Who's Warren?
Brothers Karamazov.
But sadly, the cross-eyed bear.
Yeah.
Warren Peace.
Okay, so what, what, do you have an idea?
No, I don't. It just seems kind of eh.
Yeah.
You mean the solar.
I called it Hebby's Draft.
Yeah. Well, I was working from net N and Mark B, so.
Okay, so anybody have an idea for a title?
Other than the, of the title we have at the top of the.
Yes, so, I mean.
Of the questions.
Of the questions and then, so then the.
So you want, where would you put it up here?
I, I would put it on the questionnaire. I want a questionnaire that tells people what, what the questionnaire is about. And then I want a title for.
Multi, oh.
And then I want a title also on the information sheet so that people know what they're getting there.
Okay, so what we have now is multi-acre solar array questionnaire for a moment?
How about you substitute the word array, uh, system for array so that people don't immediately go tilting.
Well, I was going to say something more colloquial, like Lyme Citizen Survey.
Lyme Citizens Solar Survey.
Something, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That should be.
Sounds enlightening.
CSS, that's not, not scurrilous.
Citizens. Solar. What is solar questionnaire?
Survey.
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 Survey says.
And then should we put something like, like if there are two people in the household who want to fill it out, like, you know, please fill out if you are over eighteen and live in the line.
Didn't we send, last time we sent two in each, to each household?
Can we, can we send it to voters? Is that, is that a possibility?
Local postal patron.
Yeah, so that's one per household.
Yeah, but you need two.
You should have two because Lynn may have totally different opinions than Tim.
Lynn has a really different opinion.
I mean, we can.
We should just say something, you know, please fill out one per adult in your, in your household.
If you want to add two, I can see what it gives them a little cost to.
Well, last time, didn't we send two? I thought we sent two.
I think we did.
Yeah, really.
You kind of have to.
Yeah. I mean, the other.
But we need to say that there's one included for each adult in your household and if there happen to be three adults, please make a copy for the third adult. You know, just to let everybody know that, don't just want one per household, we'd like every adult to submit a copy.
Is there an online option for this?
Yes.
Yeah, it could be.
It could be.
I mean, if, if we're going to do that, then it would be really nice to have a link or a URL somewhere on here, somewhere.
I know, at some, at one point we discussed.
Well, I think what we envisioned.
And there was some, some discomfort with.
Some people just won't do it online.
Well.
But I, but I, but some older than us.
I'd rather do it online.
Okay, but there's some people who won't.
Yeah, you know, I'm not saying that it should be only option, but I'm just suggesting that it should be a, an option.
Oh, it should, yeah. I'm going to suggest, let's send one copy by post with a prominent URL that says, if you'd rather fill this out online, just go here. But then if, if there's two, two or more people in a household and they are not computer comfortable.
Right.
I mean, we can say Patty has a stack this high of light form, you know, we can.
Well, we can give some to Judy at the library.
I don't think people would come up there.
We just have to have a paragraph about like how, how this is going to be done.
So.
Like, you can fill it out online or you can fill it out by paper. If you have more than one adult in your household, you can get an extra copy or make a copy yourself. And, and then we need to just have, if you're doing it online, you don't need to return it. I don't, I don't know how, well, I don't know how, how.
So what is, what is the problem? Is it the money that if we, if we send two per household, it will cost more? Because David Kahn has pledged to.
Yeah, no, I've heard that.
To pay for the whole thing.
And the energy committee's got a big budget too, so.
So we, we can, we can grab money from somebody.
A single stamp, you'll be able to send up to four sheets of paper.
So let's just, let's just double it.
So it won't cost anymore to, well, you have the envelope, but that's probably only worth three sheets of paper. You have a little bit of third sheet.
So we still have enough, right?
Yes.
We.
Yep.
We, yeah, I mean, I think we should send, send two.
Some want to have additional copies available at the town offices.
Yeah, something like.
But they can't unless they have the URL or, but they.
Well, they can copy this if they have one.
Well, some people have.
Some people can, some people are, are.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And then they, they come to the town office.
Well, we need to let them know that they can do that.
They can fill out another one just side by side and say, here's my wife Betty's.
I got this. Every adult in your household may return a survey to the address. Or use the online link, copies available at town office or library.
Okay.
Of course.
Yep.
Simple.
All right.
Yep.
Perfect.
What a, what a miracle.
One more title then?
No.
For the information.
Yeah.
What do you want to call that?
I'd like to call it Lyme Citizens Information Sheet. No, I don't know.
Well.
Lyme Solar.
Background information.
Background information? Ba, ba, uh.
Read this or you're not found it.
Solar.
No.
Solar.
You know, they kind of have to, they have to kind of convey that they, they do need to read it to, you know, to get more information, you have to somehow. I don't know.
Read first, you're going to visit by the tax assessor.
No, 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 you say read first, just at the top, read first before filling out your survey.
Yeah.
And so we don't have to call it anything. We just said, say that its function is, you know.
We'll call it the white album. Okay. Do, do we want to have the word solar in there so that they at least know what it's about?
Solar Survey Information.
Sheet, Solar Survey Information Sheet.
Then you could say, please read first.
Yeah.
Or what was Louis Cowell writing, please read me. It's really getting to the way.
Solar Survey Information Sheet.
Okay. Fabulous.
Solar Survey Information Sheet.
Then I was going to read to say sheet, to say information. Solar Survey Information, because it might be online, right?
Yep, yep, yep.
Please read first.
Yep.
Please read for moment survey.
Which actually, that's the second sentence in that first paragraph.
Oh, right, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, yeah, need to see it.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Good.
Solar Survey Information.
Yeah, that's all we need.
Done.
All right. Send it to the presses.
So I, I listened carefully today to a transparent, the public information meetings rules for, it was a, a session that CPCNH was running. And we can, in fact, as long as we're not making decisions, we can all look at this, we can circulate it and just have it go out. And comments be sent back to Dave, as long as we're not discussing it among ourselves.
As long as we're ready to go to Dave.
And the, the reason that we try to have everything to go through me is, is a rule, keeping that rule, if anyone ever challenges something else. So this is the planning board rule that comes through me and it.
Well, it also gives you a historical record.
Right.
And Freedom of Information Act and open, that, that should all be in there. Because there are instances where people get very upset or, and sometimes people get upset with boards. I've never experienced it. But, and, you know, if they want to take legal action and there's been out of meeting communication, it can get very ugly and they can take computers and.
Yeah, they can.
Pound your computer and stuff.
Take, you know, want all your emails.
I had my computer taken away and I, in fact, they kept it for so long, I never had that. And it all my kid, you know, family photos on it. Finally, when the court released it, this was the Paragon thing down in Hanover and, you know, but I was without our family computer. Our kids, you know, could not play video games or go online and do SimCity or whatever.
So it's, it's, the, the more open and historical we are, I think, the more we can avoid situations like that.
All I'm saying is we don't have to wait until the next meeting to send comments to Dave.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Google would have any more comments on it.
There better not be.
Please, please do that.
Congratulations, folks. That was, that was easy. Anybody got anything else?
I was curious about this shoe strap road thing that was forwarded to us. And wondering if there was any input that was requested or from the planning board.
Bus drivers who are driving small children out in dangerous places shouldn't be driving those children in dangerous places.
It's, the, the problem is it's a class six road and the town can't put up gates. There are signs there that say.
No, there aren't.
Well, there should have been, there were.
There's a sign right by the end, right all the way down that says, you know, pass at your own risk. What if we need is a sign up at the top that says not a through road, essentially.
Use a through road. I don't know. The select board has been debating this for a while, a couple of sessions and we're being told that there's really nothing else that we could do. We can't lock the road off. No, because it's a class six road. We're not allowed to maintain it, we're not allowed to close it.
It's subject to gates and bars. You can put.
But the gates and bars can only be put up by the owners of the property, not by the town.
But it could be thrown up if the town needed to throw it up.
Yeah, I don't think, we're not going to do that, no.
Really? Because the town's never got a fence, so.
When it was first closed, there were Jersey barriers put up.
We got in trouble for that.
Yeah. And then they put a gate up and then somebody came and pushed that. I'm not sure that everybody did. It was just cranky people went through and pushed it over.
But the real issue is.
We went out and put a cardboard sign that said, not a through road or GPS lies. Because people could drive it down and then drive it back.
But the real issue is the, is the liability for the town. Obviously, that's the only issue.
So we don't have any.
We don't have it.
That's what we're told.
Because you have a sign and all that, but then there's no problem, you know, people can do what they want.
But the planning board has no jurisdiction over anything.
I saw my town coming.
I mean, what we could do is make it, you know, upgrade the quality, upgrade the road from a class six to something else and then maintain it.
Half a million dollars was the estimate fifteen years ago.
Perfect, I think we should do it.
It would be at least a million dollars to fix that road.
Well, it's Rusty Estes' fault that it started to fall apart because he was driving his construction trucks down to make this house that Greg Hartman, it would go up and down with, with truckloads of all kinds of stuff instead of going around. And that's when the road started to fall apart.
But if the town's not liable, then it seems like we're told we're pretty well set.
It does seem like there could be a, a sign up at group ten though that says.
Hazardous.
Don't even think about it.
Sean says that there's already signs on, on both ends.
It, it says, it says, you know, road subject to gates and bars or, you know, pass at your own risk. But that's all the way down where the road takes off from the maintained portion. So it's down by the turnaround, the shoe strap and up past the Greg Hartman's place.
So why do you think people go on it? Is it because?
It's a shortcut.
Oh, yeah.
No, I know that, but I mean, you think that this school bus isn't going on it because it's a shortcut, they're going on it because of GPS.
Because the GPS shows a dotted line.
I think it was in Bay. It wasn't school.
It was two short yellow school buses.
Oh, really?
Well, they were yellow ones.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's a way to.
Those kind of cameras.
I wonder who assembles the maps for those GPS systems.
So I, I did that for nineteen years.
Yeah.
And trying to capture that data, there, there's just the, the large companies trying to do that. It takes. Yeah, it's, it's impossible to get all those little roads. You know, you look at the, the size of the country and how many, and each town has several of these little roads.
That's right. Because we have a big problem on the river road with the covered bridge. Because tractor trailers come down from Route Ten and they back half a mile.
Yep.
And we tried all, everything and we, and, and I've stopped some of the trucks. I say, hey, guys, why are you coming down here? Oh, my GPS tells me to go. And there's a sign at the end of the road, but they don't look at the signs.
So you know what, there's a, I just was, I brought this up at a, at a select board meeting once or twice. You know, there's a town in Vermont that had this problem where they keep getting their, their covered bridge smashed by big trucks. And so finally what they did is they put up two steel poles and a big metal bar on by chains across the road. You know, I don't know, a hundred feet in front of the bridge. And then if you're driving a truck, you're going to hit that.
Right.
And it swung out of the way, but at least you know you can.
Right, well, this isn't trucks that are trying to go through. I mean, this tractor trailer, obviously. It's just trucks that come down and they know they can't, you know, they get there and they can't go through. So then they got to either back all the way to Route Ten or turn around and run over Dave Hewitt's granite post, you know, all that stuff. So it's just a pain in the neck.
So I do know, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what relevance this has, but I do know the state very quickly was able to say to Google Apps and I think it was in Bing, the stepford bridge is closed. So Google, the day after, I said, geez, I want to go to Wing's Market. And it says, well, there's this, this place called Fairly. And you can get that and, and so, so I wonder if the town could talk to the state, could talk to somebody at the state who can say how they.
This is how they got that information.
Yeah.
Because. I mean, to change the GPS for these truckers.
It would only change a car place. You know, it would only change one that would renew. If you've got one in your syst, in your car, then that's not going to change.
Yeah, and I think David told me years ago that a lot of the truckers buy their own GPSs and put them in their trucks.
So is there no, there's no sign that could be put up at the end of the road to, you know, because we, we got online and it said, are you willing to pay for this yourself? With no dollar amount signed to it. We're like, well, I don't know. We got to go to the select board and then the meeting was canceled.
Well, I think, I think in that case, in our case, the only thing that may work is to have a fairly large sign that said, your GPS is wrong. And I know some, a town in, or several towns, a lot have done that. And I think that might get their attention. I don't know.
You also have to remember that there are multiple vendors that produce maps. It's not just one source.
Right, right. But I mean, if you could back off Google and Bing and, I don't know, TomTom or whoever.
But that's, you just.
They're all the same, but.
But TomTom supplies.